We are now.
All right. It is a appropriate hour. And we have three members present. We will call the Grant County Board of Commissioners to order, May the first. And we're going to ask for you to stand. Mr. Stewart is going to introduce our prayer individual's praying this morning, and then I'll lead us in the pledge.
Hey, good morning, everybody. We have Mr. Tim Ross from Real Community Covenant Church. He's here today. Tim, if you want to come up to the podium. He's going to lead us in prayer, and then Commissioner Bardley's going to lead us in the pledge.
Everlasting Father, I just ask that your peace, your joy, and your love be bestowed upon those in the room. Will we agree to disagree, or you would be in the midst of wisdom among us? In this county, in this seat, and God just bless those leaders among us and those not in leadership, as Romans tells us, to submit to the authorities that you have placed for the unrighteous. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Raise the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We see you. Thank you for leading us in prayer today. Thanks, Tim. Right, under the agenda items, next up is claims minutes payroll. We do not have any minutes to worry about today, so with regard to our claims, from April 24th, we have a series of preapprovals. We have under 24th, general invoice added batch at $268,994.20. Other batch, $41,753.11. Highway batch at $69,741.14 for a grand total of $380,488.45. We also had a preapproval that was presented to Hare Chevrolet in the amount of $46,200 for sheriff vehicle. That preapproval was given on 4/27 of this last month. Those, I believe, are our preapprovals, and we would need a motion to ratify those.
Mr. President, I would move that we pass ratification for preapproved claims.
I second that motion.
All right. Motion to support. Any other questions on those preapprovals?
Yes, sir.
Hearing done. All those in favor would say aye.
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 Aye. We have ratified those preapprovals. Now for invoice added reports today. General batch is at $162,207.64. Other batch, $146,982.82. Highway batch, $49,693.42. For a grand total of $358,883.88. And again, with clarification, those couple of added items were a part of that amount, right?
That's correct.
Initially, last week, these two had been left out, and that was corrected this morning. So that includes those two extra pieces of paper there, other claims, I should say. So we would need a motion to pay these bills if you so choose, gentlemen.
Make a motion to pay the bills dated as May 1st in the tune of $358,883.88.
And I second that motion.
Mr. Wright made the motion. Mr. Stewart seconded that. Any questions about any of the invoices?
Yes, sir.
Hearing done. All those in favor would say aye.
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 Aye. It is approved. We also have payroll number nine. Preapproval was given on the 25th, and we paid out in the amount of $564,092.26. That was paid out on the 28th. So we would need a motion to ratify the preapproval for payroll number nine.
Motion to accept payroll number nine.
I second Mr. Wright's motion.
Motion, Mr. Wright, second, Mr. Stewart. We usually don't discuss payroll, so all those in favor would say aye.
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 Aye. It's carried. Thank you. Under Communications and Board Updates, we'll move around the room if we have elected officials or department heads that need to make a presentation. Anything from Auditor's Office?
We have been working with Lao and AOD on the new timekeeping system. We've been doing that for the last several weeks. We will be bringing on the Auditor's Office this week as a trial. And once we get that finalized, been going, and feel comfortable, we're going to start bringing on the other offices within the annex.
Wonderful.
So that's where we're at with the timekeeping system.
Very good.
Everything else is good.
Thank you. Other elected officials. EMS is not going to be, or EMA is not going to be in here. I don't think EMS will be in here as well. So I'm ready to go. Let's go down and receive this monthly report from the Clerk of Courts. That is month ending 3/31/23. And again, that's just, we receive these reports usually can do it by consent or by motion, whichever you prefer.
Consent is fine. Consent is fine.
By common consent, we will receive the monthly Clerk of Courts report, month ending 3/31/23. All right. Ready for IT, Marcus?
Got some stuff for you gentlemen here. Just, we'll pass those on down. All right. All right, so you gentlemen have a couple items in front of you. So the first one I wanted to bring to your attention was the Granite Solutions quote or proposal. This is basically a continuation of the discussions for seeking new Internet service providers just because of all the issues we've had with AT&amp;T. Basically, we worked with them, and I gave them all of our billing for our Spectrum Internet Service, our AT&amp;T service, and basically, they were able to determine that they could save the county approximately $60,000. Well, $60,000 and 48. I didn't read that this morning. But basically, it's just $60,000 annually out of the Commissioners' budget, because I believe you all paid those bills. And the nice thing about it is, is it would consolidate all the payments and the billing down to one portal, or to one invoice. So right now, I know April, basically, she gets invoices from Spectrum. AT&amp;T, I know AT&amp;T, we have three different invoices from them per month. So with this, it just puts it all under one umbrella. It makes it a lot simpler to pay it. Part of the proposal would be us basically switching our ISP from AT&amp;T to Metronet for our main Internet circuits, for our SIP and for our main Internet line. And I believe those are on three-year plans, so that would have to be on a three-year deal. Now, the facts lines and stuff like that, those are all, you know, per month. But I mean, that's pretty much the gist of it. I don't know if you gentlemen have any thoughts or any questions you have.
I'll make a couple comments, because I've been working with Marcus on this, and been in the email streams and on some WebEx meetings and things. Give you an idea, this Granite company is kind of a, I want to say, like a clearinghouse where they have contracts with providers. And so they're this big consortium that represents a lot of counties, not only in Indiana, but other states as well, correct, Marcus?
Yeah, they're the biggest one.
And yeah, it's a multi-billion dollar company. And what they do, they go in and negotiate rates, and then they're the person who gets those rates. And so, you know, I had a little reservation about like AT&amp;T, how much we were paying them, and then what they're, they're going to be getting out of us now is way less than what we're paying because they've negotiated those rates, and they're a big player. And so I fully support this. This is something that, like I say, savings of $60,000. And we just kind of kept on adding things to it.
Right, it was initially 40. However, I didn't get all of the AT&amp;T invoices initially, so I had to sign into the AT&amp;T billing portal, which I finally got access to, and I was able to get the two other invoices. And once I added those, that basically jumped it up, our savings up to $20,000.
The other thing we wanted to make sure.
Official $20,000.
And I believe this was the company, correct me if I'm wrong, Marcus, but we wanted to make sure Lao was integrated with this, correct?
Right. Yeah, they do offer capability of that, and they said, for some reason, if Lao doesn't, isn't able to fully integrate with it, I mean, it would still just be one invoice consolidated down. So basically, April would just make a claim like she normally does. It would just be one bill instead of.
But they integrate a bunch of other companies, and they feel probably 99% sure that they can do that. And of course, we're just switching over and things, and getting their payroll and ready to go. Wanted to just make sure that that was a part of this whole process. So I, I think it's, as far as I'm concerned, I think we've done our due diligence trying to figure out exactly what needs to be done, and well savings of $60,000 a year.
Is there any kind of prepayment penalties for lack of a better term with the people, with the companies we're currently with?
No, not, I mean, not to my knowledge. That'd be something I would, I mean, we'd have to double check before we, you know, did the switch, but to my knowledge, no, because they're, you know, our AT&amp;T rep, they've been trying to get us to sign a new contract and stuff. Basically, since we had that snafu last year, which I don't believe you were here yet.
Yeah, well, I was, you told me about it.
Right. Basically, whenever we had that, basically, it was, it never happened because it wasn't a good situation for us. So I could, I could follow up on that and get that information. But with us, if we were to proceed with this plan, there probably would be some other additional things we'd have to do in regards to services, like for our phone system. Because basically, they would, Metronet would have to take over the SIP trunk, so they would have to grab all those phone numbers and everything, move it over to their stuff. And we would have to make some adjustments to our phone system on that end.
That was a question that was formulating in my mind. You mentioned that we had three other AT&amp;T invoices. And we start the Internet moving over to this grant, Granite company. Are we going to see increased invoice activity on our phone side of things?
No, I don't think so. So basically, the way our phone stuff works, it basically comes in through an Internet pipe. So it, and basically, I mean, it's pretty much unlimited. The only time it's not is whenever there's like an international or long-distance type call, and we're already set up for that stuff right now. So I mean, really, it shouldn't be that much of a change on it, but.
Take a look at page three. Kind of go through a little bit of the phone numbers there.
Yeah, which I think those might be fax, fax numbers or analog lines, maybe?
I think we still have an analog lineup in the Commissioners' office.
Yeah, and basically, they would just take those over, and nothing would happen or change on that. They would stay on AT&amp;T. And I think it was the same thing for Spectrum as well, because that would be for all the IDAC stuff. And the other thing, I believe, they found in the, I think it was in the Spectrum billing, was I guess we're paying for, like, I don't know if it's the city's IDAC connection over there?
Yeah, yes, because.
Yeah, okay.
Part of one system.
Right. So, so basically, that one would also, it looked like it would stand with Charter as well. But a lot of those, they're staying the same, so basically, they would just take over the account information. The only one that wouldn't would be the AT&amp;T for our Internet and SIP.
You might, you might talk to us a little bit about Metronet's response as far as downtime for things.
Yeah, so, well, the thing is, the nice thing about this is if we were to go with Granite, basically, that would, we would go to them for the support needs and stuff like that. So like, we were having an issue with Metronet, like with the Internet, we'd basically reach out to them, and they have a 24/7, 365 support center that we could call, and we'd also get a appointed person or representative that we can contact, and they would initiate the, you know, the support ticket stuff. I did email them about like the SLA, like how long it would take for a tech to be out, and they sent me an email, and I think for the Internet stuff, it was like, max was like eight hours response time. But they say normally it's within four, if there's like an outage or something like that.
Remind me, we have a redundancy right now for Internet?
No, not right yet, no.
Would, if we go over Granite, are we still planning on trying to have a redup?
Yeah, because what we could do, we could keep the current AT&amp;T circuit, and maybe we could just lower it down to like a smaller speed or something. So that way, in the event of an outage with Metronet, we would still have the capability to leverage that circuit. And that, that was my thought process, because it's already here, and we got it. And there's already another one down at Central Dispatch as well.
So would that be underneath Granite, or would that be a?
I believe that one would have to stay under AT, it'd be under AT&amp;T.
With us?
Right.
We'll still have.
Add that into the cost, yeah.
Right. But like I said, would that be in a backup? It'd be one of those things we could shrink the speed of it down.
And speed for Metronet compared to what we have now, same, or is it better?
They had it set to, if you look on page, let me see here. I think it was four or five. I think they were giving us the same, I think it was 400, yeah. Yeah, they're giving us 400 right now.
And that's what we currently have?
Well, we have 200. So basically, because they have different plans and stuff, and they don't 100% line up with AT&amp;T, it's basically 400. Then I think 500 is the next step, and then it's a gig is your next step. So. And like I said, if you, if you gentlemen still need time to think about it, you can, we can always discuss this at the next meeting. And I can also have them jump on the call as well and answer any questions maybe I don't, I can't answer, so.
How long is this quote good for?
I believe they just redid it on Friday, so I would imagine we have 30 days to do it. But I think last time it was a couple months long, how good the quote was.
Do you have a motion to, are we looking for a motion to move it there?
So that's appropriate if you gentlemen are ready to go. Steve's done a lot of work with you. I feel comfortable with it. I mean, but if you guys want more time, I mean, we got another meeting this month.
Yeah, because it is.
Seriously, whatever you guys would like to do, target for you. I'm comfortable moving forward with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's the transition look like, though? If you get everything in place, is it just a flip of the switch?
Well, they'll have to.
Be down.
Well, there shouldn't be any downtime. Metronet, basically, what they'll have to do is we'll just have to have a cut over date. So basically, they'll have all, they'll rack and stack the new equipment, and then basically, we'll just have to work with them to move everything over.
Did they give us a date, Marcus?
No, they did not.
I think they're just waiting on us to.
Yeah, I think they're just waiting.
And again, sooner the better because of cost savings.
$60,000, yeah.
It's a three-year term, correct?
$60,000.
Yeah, and that's for the Internet circuits and stuff. So like, all the fax lines and stuff like that, all that stuff, it just automatically gets inherited, and it just goes to the monthly billing. So the Internet's the only one.
Currently, we'll be translating what we're paying now into the new agreement with a cost saving. We know we're still going to, if we talk about redundancy, we're going to put some of that money back in.
Back in, right.
And it's not that much, I mean.
Right, and what we can do, because I talked with our vendor, and basically, we can set it up to where we could even utilize both Internet circuits at the same time. So that way, it's not like the one's just sitting and not being used, so.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we accept Granite Government Solutions, the proposal that Marcus has presented. We accept that proposal as presented.
Support.
Motion to support. Any other discussion, ladies? Any clarification, ED?
Will you be signing, Mr. President, or is that?
They have just a single. We can either sign the President or the IT Director, whichever you prefer.
Have you signed?
Ready? Ready to vote?
Yep.
All right. All those in favor of Mr. Stewart's motion to go with the Granite Government Solutions as presented would say aye.
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 It's carried.
The next item I have for you guys is the Purdue Technical Assistance Agreement. So as you know, the state, they've been pushing the IN.gov. We're currently in the process of working on that for the county email system. All of us in IT have been test dummies for it, and it seems like it's, everything's worked out pretty well. We get our grantcounty.net emails, and we get the IN.gov variation of the email. And the other thing that they were talking about was cybersecurity. And, you know, they have, the state has contacts over at Purdue University. I've been talking with a gentleman named Joe. And basically, I told him, you know, we were needing an assessment done, because to my knowledge, we haven't had one done professionally. So I spoke with him, and basically, he sent me this agreement. And basically, it's valued at $3,600, but is no cost to us at the county. However, they do just need a signature from us in order to proceed with, with the project.
So. So I've been involved with this one a little bit as well. And so cybersecurity insurance. I'm not really sure if this will help our cause by having an assessment done. It's something we'll want to get with ING on, to say, once we do this, once they take a look at us and things like that, it may save us some money on our insurance. I'm saying may, don't know for sure. But I do think it's sure worth looking into that we have went to the trouble to get the assessment and see if that helps our insurance cost any.
Right, and the other thing is, like with these assessments, they also help you, they open the possibility for grant funding as well. I know the really big cybersecurity project that they're pushing out, like I know that one requires you to have your disaster plan or an incident plan, but you also have to have an assessment done in order, before you can even turn in an application for it. So it's almost becoming like a, like a prerequisite at this point.
In my understanding, I believe this is the one, that we're kind of ahead of the curve with a lot of the other counties, that they have not done this, and so it places in a part, I'm pretty sure this is the one. Except we're on several different things, so they kind of run together a little bit. But I do know that by having the cybersecurity group, we are ahead of the curve on a lot of other counties. And so, again, zero cost to the county to have this done. Our recommendation is we would do it.
How did we run across this grant?
The state, go ahead.
Yeah, basically, the state, they have several initiatives that they've been pushing, and they've been sending out emails, I would assume, to like county officials and IT directors and stuff. My IT director's group, that's basically where a lot of that information comes to me personally. So I know that's where I found that out. That's where I got like our template that we use for our cybersecurity incident response plan, because that's a massive undertaking, and they already have folks that do it. So, I mean, basically, it all just comes down from the state, and we work with Bob and Amanda, and they also get notifications when grants open up. And I believe that the cybersecurity grant is from the Department of Homeland Security. So basically, we're working with Bob and Amanda on that, on that one. So we've also been getting information from them.
Are they already doing this work, or are they waiting on the approval?
They're waiting on the approval for this, because as I mentioned earlier, there, we have to have an assessment done, and then we should be able to file for the grant or apply for it.
It says project period is even the date.
Right, yeah, so they haven't started it. No, but they haven't started yet.
Traditionally, only in security grants is you pay, and then we reimburse the amount, so that's kind of what we're following here as well.
Right. Yeah, but this one's no cost.
Zero cost.
Yeah, it's zero cost to us, so.
I like the idea, and I really like the fact that Marcus is bringing us projects that don't cost any.
It's a good thing, right? We are, Marcus.
We would need a formal motion if we want to proceed on this technical assistance agreement.
I'll make that motion. Can we move forward with this preuniversity technical assistance agreement as presented?
Support. Motion, Mr. Stewart, second, Mr. Wright. Any other discussion or questions?
Yes, sir.
Hearing done. All those in favor would say aye.
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 It is carried.
All right. And like I said, the last thing I have is basically, I'm just requesting permission to, we're changing our help desk, patching and remote software from SolarWinds to Ninja One. It's basically around the same cost. So basically, I, you know, I would like to cancel those, basically switch over to Ninja One. So I'd take those funds to do it. The cost from, that I have was, the annual cost was $10,500. And that includes, you know, patching all the machines and us being able to log into them and do all that good stuff. And the nice thing about this software, it's all done through the web browser, all through one spot. Whereas with our current setup, one thing's in the web, and one thing's on a server that's hosted onsite here. So this just helps clean up a lot of that extra setup right there.
You say we're just swapping costs, or there's an additional amount?
No. So basically, instead of mutating. So basically instead of me taking those, that, that, that amount and paying it towards our existing stuff, we'll just take it and put it towards this.
There he goes again.
And contract wise, we're good.
Yeah, it's just a year. Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's just annual.
I, I, I think we can even come and consent to that. Yes, we're not seeing any additional costs. So.
Yeah, sounds good.
Consent?
Okay.
We have consent. All three commissioners say, say move forward with that project as well.
Alright, that's all I got.
I'm bringing these kind of projects, would you?
You're making this one.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
Hey, thanks again, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Right, we'll go to Mr. White in the Highway Department.
They can spend all the money. First thing they are gonna bring up is they have an unofficial detour from the state. Uh, they're gonna resurface State Road thirty seven from State Road twenty six to Marion City Limits. So, um, kinda gave an unofficial detour on some roads to use, uh, to get traffic up to.
Twenty six to City Limits.
State Road nine, basically they're on the south end of Marion. So.
I've already had some people complaining. About them making their own unofficial, unofficial detours.
And I was thinking that maybe we might check with Kyle and see if we can kinda do something to make an ordinance that when we do have an unofficial detour, that maybe we can do something to find truck drivers, et cetera. Because on State Road twenty two, we've had that situation right now is they're closed between thirty seven and nine. So we first they had trucks going down six hundred south. So we put big barricades out there. Then they went down six fifty, then they went down seven hundred. And I don't know if we can just put like an ordinance, you know, and basically the sheriff's department can write tickets and, cause it's not bad on public passenger cars, but when you got these eighteen millers that are turning in people's yards and ditches and everything else and poles and stop signs and.
Those county roads not used to that weight load.
Right.
We're gonna washboard or tear up our, our county roads terribly.
So I was gonna maybe check with Kyle and see if there's something out there that we can do something to keep these people off the secondary roads while they're doing these state projects.
Uh, I would, I would encourage you to do that.
Do we know how long?
That one I believe is just this summer.
Just this summer.
Yeah. Well, I mean.
If you read in the beginning, it says start and.
I saw it, yeah.
It don't really say when it started.
And again, I know it's all weather related and all that stuff, but man. Wow.
The one on twenty two, I think was ninety day closure. So, I mean, ninety days, they can do a lot of damage in ninety days.
So we have this, uh, in front of us, the letter of understanding unofficial detour, uh, from, uh, on State Road thirty seven from State Road twenty six to State Road nine, Marion City Limits. And the unofficial detour will be two hundred west to seven hundred south to one hundred west to US thirty five to one fifty west to three hundred south. And they've made the, uh, drawing in there for, for us. But, uh, this comes with a recommendation to adopt this. Is that correct?
Yes.
Need a motion?
Motion to adopt the, um, the request from the, uh, State Department of Transportation.
I second that motion.
Alright. Motion, Mr. Wright, second, Mr. Stewart. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it is carried. We all get to sign this one, guys. So we can start signing.
Uh, the next thing I was gonna bring up is I did get some quotes on finishing the concrete work for the new building. I would like to review them. Hopefully next meeting bring, uh, quotes to you. Uh, paving for the community crossing grant that we just received, I'd like to have set the bid date for June fifth. For your meeting to open them then, if that's alright. So I can get that advertised and everything.
With your consent, gentlemen, we'll do that bid opening on June the fifth?
Yes. And Mark, I did get an email from a gentleman this morning that they will get that e-document sent to you on that. Community crossing all day.
I guess I did e-document for, uh, uh, home security. I, I think I was still waiting on.
Yeah, he said the next thing is it'll come to you to get signed. So I'll get that sent in. So. Uh, the Boys and Girls Club, I've got all the county's information out of there and belongings. So I think the only thing else I need is a couple, I need to remove the locks when they, they'd like to take it over and, uh, get the electric converted into their name or whoever's.
You will have to have Kyle draw up a resolution or ordinance to put that property into their, their name. So working on, uh, appraisals right now.
Okay.
Uh, the bridge over here on Tis Street in Marion, Bridge seven eighty nine, hopefully be done the end of this week. If not, probably the first one next week. I got some bridge projects that'll be coming up here in the near future on getting design work and stuff like that. So hopefully I'll present that here in the next meeting. Still working on paving and chip cell projects for this year. I'll get you a gentleman list hopefully at next meeting so you can kinda know where we're gonna go. I did get two prices on some truck chassis. Um, I'd like to review them a little bit and hopefully next meeting bring that up to you. Like I said before, is they're almost two years out on getting a truck chassis. So I think it's a thing where we probably have to order them and probably not receive them till end or middle of twenty twenty four at the earliest kinda thing. So, but I'll try to get you some prices. So we know where we stand on that. Uh, the bridge just north of Matthews, uh, they've got one site all opened up and hopefully, um, we'll get it poured this week and then repair the other side here for the next week or two. So working on that. I did talk to Kyle this morning about the rug use agreement with Blackwood County on their solar project. He's working on that. I guess he's been in contact with their attorney and he'll get us some more information on that. So. Only thing else I had to bring up today is I noticed Nancy's on about the sick bank. You want me to give them my letter or you want me to wait until?
If you want to, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I talked to Justin the other day, cause we kinda was working on the, uh, sick bank thing too. And I'll, I'll just kinda present what I'd like to see with the highway side, but, um, I know Nancy, you've got some more information. So.
Want the letter to speak for itself or do you want to make any comments?
Um, like I said, I, we just wanna make sure that we have something if we do need it. This is kind of the way we did it in the past was if somebody has a major illness or sickness in the family, they're off for an extended period and need some days where, you know, a lot of us have quite a few days we get offered to help make sure they get through their sick time or whatever they need. So I've gotta let Nancy go on her part of it and see if there's anything I comment on. So.
Alright.
I've been, I've been, another thing I'd bring, I've been getting everything from the state board accounts. I know they're needing some documents on my federal projects and stuff. So I've been trying to get that caught up with them. So. Other than that, that's all I have.
Other questions, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will move right to, uh, full business and Nancy, if you wanna come and give us a overview of our sick bank policy that's your sheriff's.
Well, as you know, we've had a, I think when the policies, it's probably ten, twelve years ago, they created a sick bank, which, um, at the time, I think it was a good idea. I think it's outlived its usefulness. The problem is with this day and age, it, um, and the attrition of employees, it's gotten to the point where I think at one time we had fifty, sixty employees on it. Now we're down to thirty four, half of them, which are highway employees. So that leaves us with eighteen people who joined the sick bank. And what that means is every January, we send out a notice that employees can, um, donate a day of their sick time. And a little of the fact that they would get sick down the road, they would have a bank of forty days that they could use. Um, with less and less people, that number's getting less and less. And it's to the point now that, you know, if we had a rush and we had several people using it, um, we wouldn't have enough. It would go bankrupt. And so it's kind of, uh, Justin and I discussed it quite a bit and the, the sheriff's department has a voluntary plan that's reasonably good. They don't have it in writing, but they've told me the outline of it. So we are looking at the possibility of eliminating the current sick bank and replacing it with a volunteer bank. Um, like I said, the, this current sick bank's flawed, um, in the fact that if I was an employee, the way it's awarded, and I know that in next year I'm gonna have to have a major surgery and I only have ten sick days and I haven't been in it. Well, allows you to make up the days that you missed. So I could say, okay, I'm gonna donate six of my days so I can get in the sick bank. Because I know when I use my time, I've got another forty. So, you know, it just, the way it's set up, it's just, and I think I've sent you all, um, my reasons why we feel like it's, it's kind of outlived its usefulness and that we would like to maybe next time, if you agree with eliminating it, present you with a, a volunteer plan, uh, sick bank. Kind of in the way the sheriff's department does it. And the other thing, sick bank excludes like probation, corrections, sheriff's department, the courts. So it's really not all of the employees in the county. So.
Just a couple, couple things. What, I, I know the city of Marion has, um, what I believe you're trying to set up, what Mr. White is asking for, where actually when you do donate, you really know where that day is going to. And I think, I think that's, that's an important thing. Um, as, as people, I, I know some of the people over there that's, that's gotten it because of cancer or whatever that they had. And so the other people would feel like they need, you know, if you've got five weeks of vacation or whatever, you could go ahead and give that. So I, I mean, I, I think it's a good opportunity to take care of each other, colleagues who we work with every day and stuff. But I also think this will kinda help from any kind of abuse, if you will, uh, where, where there's a little bit more. Now, my question becomes, um, you know, as far as, uh, this is a bookkeeper, like Mr. White's, the bookkeeper would record the time donated. Is there a way to do that in the new law system?
I would have to ask. I'm not aware of, uh, that in the system now. Right now I track it just on a spreadsheet. So, I mean, but it would be a lot more involved.
So who do you get that information from?
Well, we send a notice out every year saying anybody wants to join. And I've got it back to, I think, two thousand, well, I got it before two thousand sixteen, this spreadsheet. But anybody that, we send a form out, they have to sign up for it. We notify their supervisor. And then that's taken off their, 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 their sick days that they earned that year. And then I just, they send the forms to us and I track it. And then if someone requests a sick day, it goes to the board, the sick bank board, which it consists, would consist of Angie, Mark and the president of the council, which I know we may wanna look at that too. Um, and then once it's approved, which there's, the other thing too is we have HIPAA now where we didn't have. So we can't send out a notice and say, and Angie needs some days cause she has cancer. We, that's against HIPAA laws. We can't really, I would not feel comfortable sending out to everybody saying, hey, we have, we, we probably should make it, we have an employee who's sick. Now, anybody who works around them is gonna know that, but I, I don't think we can, you know, send out lists for.
Yeah, I, I see it more departmental based. Uh, you know, uh, like I say, these are the colleagues you work with all the time and stuff. And I was kinda, again, knowing a few things that's happened over the city, they kinda, you know, if it's in the police department or if it's in the street department or whatever, they, they kinda take care of one another.
And, and that's good in departments like Highway, but then you have departments, there's three people and, you know, that, and just, so how do you handle?
However, I think if there was a need, you know what I'm saying? And, and again, I.
We can describe the need, we just can't say who.
Right, who it is. I, I guess I would refer to you.
Well, initially I'd just like to go ahead and eliminate the sick bank.
Yeah.
And then like I said, we present and I'll work with, with David and Tony on, I, I don't, you know, I, I don't know if we want separate individual department sick banks or have one general one, which I know they would, you know, someone's gonna have to regulate.
We, we need to set some parameters. Parameters. And that's, that's what I was gonna refer to, Mr. Bartley, as far as, I mean, he's been around this now for quite some time. You said on that, so which, what's your take?
I think, I think it is, it's gone past its, its life cycle.
Okay.
And I, I've seen what we're talking about work for years and years over, over there with the city. And I, I actually from over there, I have donated to other people, um, and happy to do so.
Yes.
Because you know what's going on in their life. So I, I would encourage us to move forward.
Now, does the city, does this sheriff, uh, the police department have a separate one from the rest of employees or it's all one?
As I understand it, it's all one.
It's all one, my understanding.
Okay, I can contact Chris and see what she has.
And again, I, I'm just using that as an example. I know it works effectively. I know people are in need a lot of times and they don't have. I mean, financially this would help our employees in the, in the long game, you know, if they become very ill and needed some time off.
Well, how the sheriff's department works, and like I said, they don't have it in writing, but what they have to do is a person has to, or their representative has to reach out to the sheriff, tell them what the need is. Sheriff determines what the need is. See, and that, that gets a little bit, we've got to be very careful not to discriminate.
Correct.
And again, that's why we don't, we have to be careful about what we put out there, you know? It could be just, we have an employee who's in need with, you know, and, uh, who wants to donate. And, and, and David's department, he's got a lot of long-term employees who have built up this huge, in fact, they've probably backed out where they don't get their ten days. So they're more than willing to throw in days to someone even if they don't know, because they're gonna lose them anyway. So.
And just to let you know that, like, my bookkeeper keeps track of all their time. So, I mean, you know, they know how many vacations, et cetera. I mean, I don't think that's really, I mean, if they use a sick day or whatever, we just notify the auditor's office that they use that day. I mean, so. I don't think really her system could probably do that for each department. I mean, and, you know what I'm saying? If, if you donated to somebody, basically saying, hey, I'm gonna give two days to this individual, I don't think really, it'd be really hard for her department to keep track of.
I'm just, I'm just wanting to make sure we got an accountability factor in there.
Well, the, the AOD system, um, you know, they are building it to, you know, to benefit the county, to benefit the sheriff's department. So, you know, everybody has different rules that they go by and I, I don't know if it's something that they could build into the system or not.
I'm sure it is. I'm sure it is. To where you could manually go in and, you know. So I'm saying take care, if it was all, if it was all in the system, um, we'd just ask for that to be done.
Yeah. My previous employer, we had the system where, and this was a PTO policy where it was put in and it just was a constant, it was a moving, you know, target. There was never some day where X amount of days was put into your account. You earn so much per year. And the system tracked it. If department head, uh, needed to know their entire department, um, what their current time is, they could just go on the system and see exactly how many hours every employee's. And so it would go through payroll. Every time a day was taken, it was taken off and, and it was just a kind, and there was never any real upkeep except every time someone went to a different increment. And we had to do that.
If we eliminate the current, uh, sick bank board today, oh, will you, do you feel comfortable in, in getting us a final draft for our next meeting? Uh, again, we don't want to eliminate something and then be dangling for a month or, or more.
I think we can at least get something to you that may need revising, but.
I recommend we move forward with that. So would we eliminate the, uh, just, you know, questioning, we eliminate the sick bank, um, policy as, as currently read. policy as, as currently read? And eliminate that as of our next meeting? Because technically, if we eliminated, somebody has a major problem over the next two weeks, they're in the-
Well, we have not, we have not sent out anything to employees. So what we, my suggestion would be, because we do have days in the sick bank, and we currently have thirty-two employees. Like I said, eighteen of them is in David's department. So what, my suggestion was that equals out to about three, three and a half days per person that we would basically give back. Because we've got all these days in there that these people have donated. Do we give back those days? And, you know, contact the supervisor.
I see a head shake note there, David.
I think you're going to cause issues there. Because my guys already think they've already lost a day. You know, like last year, they gave a day in case they did need it. And now you go giving it back. If a gentleman's only been in there one year, for a guy that's been in there ever since the thing started, like myself, I've been in there since twenty sixteen when it started. So how's it fair, he's getting three days and I'm getting three days and I've been in there? You know, I think, I'd just say eliminate it, be done.
Well, we've already had people reach out to us. We've had other employees reach out to us and say, hey, because we haven't sent a letter, if you're not going to do it, I want my days back then, you know. So, because I don't have the opportunity. So I have had people reach out to me wanting their days.
Yeah, but they realize that when they went into that, they were going to lose a day.
Right.
I, I, again, I'm always looking for the, the compromise. But I don't have a problem returning this year's day that they donated.
They did donate this year. We have done it.
Okay, so we're in good shape? Let's cut it off.
Yeah, we haven't donated this year, so.
And it does say in the policy that once you donate a day, it becomes, what's that wording? It, it becomes, no longer yours.
My term would be forfeit.
Yes. Basically, you forfeit, it has no identity. So it becomes sick bank day. So it does say that in the policy.
So we're covered by the policy? That if anybody wanted to come back on us, we're covered by the policy that's sort of in place?
So I would entertain a motion if you, you're wanting to about eliminating the current sick bank policy and that we will institute a new one at our next meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support. Motion, Mr. Stewart, second Mr. Wright, further discussion? All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carrie?
Thank you, Nancy.
Yep.
Are you aware of other whole business we need to handle at this time of year?
Yes, sir.
All right, we've got a couple of new items. Discussion on economic growth opportunity. Darren Reese is with us. And you're going to have to tell us what the CSCO is. Because I can't, I can't alliterate that real quick. I know where it is, but I don't know.
I don't know where it is. Oh, good morning. Thanks for having me this morning. I would like to start with a little brief introduction about my, my professional organization, CSCO Group. We are an engineering, environmental, and public safety planning organization. We are based in Indianapolis. We do work all across North America. We do, we do work in about, just over one-third of Indiana counties today. And hopefully, we'll be doing some more here since this is home. But we've got about, about forty employees that are mostly in Indianapolis, but also spread across the country as well, to do the things that we do. Primarily, environmental subsurface remediation is, is what we do. We do safety planning. We do hazardous commodity flow studies for local emergency planning councils, which is something that we're talking to Bob about now as well. It's like, it's a, it's a pretty specialized tally that we do of the hazardous materials that run through a community, whether it be through their water rail or highways. The folks in East Palestine, Ohio would have had us do that survey for them. They would have had a much better idea on how to respond to the, the train derailment that has caused so much headache from that. So, but today, and I will be happy to share some more information as you have any, any questions related to that, that's fine. I am the CEO and owner of the group. I've been with them for twenty-five, or for ten of its twenty-five years. So, and it has put a lot of miles on my part. So, I'm, I am to come aware that this body has decided to assume the former Dana facility across, across town for the purpose of redevelopment. I think it's a noble purpose. It is a very tedious practice. We do specialize in pre-development assessment, financial stack identification to be able to get a property such as that in its readiness for redevelopment. So, and we'll be happy to work with this body or whomever they would want to designate as a leader for that project, assuming that is a project. Thus, the kind of ambiguous title. I'm like, hey, I heard you guys got Dana. I want to come talk to you about it. Because there's stuff you need to know. There's, it would have been optimal to get you before you got it, but you got it. So now we can, we can do that, too. Because that, that site is, it, it has some pretty significant environmental subsurface impacts. Not that it's not overcoverable for what it is that you want to do with the place, but having a plan right now, starting with the appropriate council, would be, would be what my recommendation, my ask is today, is that I would like to do that. So that would be, you know, some investigation, probably some legal work to track down title. We have the ability to recover funds from responsible parties of the past in order to assist with the necessary means to, to get to a place where it could be redevelopable. So that's, that's, and we've done this in many circumstances, including in, in Marion Cafe Valley on the former RCA site. You know, you don't put a commercial bakery on Brownfield without knowing what you're doing. You know, we've done that. There's a large, one hundred and twenty acre site down on the Ohio River called Jeff Boat and Jefferson Bill that's been, that was a, a industrial boat building facility since the Civil War that we did this process with, and now it is under redevelopment. So it is, you know, a number of sites, and Terrahoat, Muncie here, as I said, Plymouth, Bloomington, about a couple dozen cities that we've worked with along this route. So I just wanted to kind of open the conversation and see what it was. I do think time is of the essence. And candidly, this isn't something that most people think about. Most people don't want to talk to the environmental people about anything. So I get that. But it is also, if it is that intention to turn that property into something that's generating A, B, and potentially jobs, you've got to start with what, what you've actually got. And then make a sophisticated plan to get there. Oh, I forgot, we did the Firestone. We found all the money for the SOS group to do the Firestone remediation that was necessary just down the street there, too. So, yeah, we've got my own Brownfield here on the north side. It is now a really cute boutique. If you have a shop there, please do.
There's money for that. He'd be coming in for a blog for his business.
Well, I mean, I, it's, I appreciate my tenant's ability to pay her rent.
Yeah, that's good.
So please, please do that. So I get very well versed in, in what a Brownfield can be. And I, they would like to be able to work with you guys on, on that particular property and hopefully some others at the end.
So Mr. Reese, you was talking about finding money for the SOS project and things like that. Is there dollars out there, state or federal, that you could help us assist?
Yes.
To go after? I, you know, we, we, we took that and it was going into the tax, correctly, the loan, Mr. Bartley. And with the thought of if we were in control of the land, not somebody who might buy the land at a tax sale or, and, and not pay for it, that this would give us that opportunity to go ahead and have control of that land if somebody was coming in. I also think it would give us an opportunity, if we did have the study done, and it would make it that much more marketable, if, if we could show what needs to be done, how much is that going to cost to remediate the situation? And it would, to me, it would make it a more marketable property to talk to somebody about, so.
As a case for that, just like in Kokomo downtown, across the street from their city hall, was a automobile dealership. And automobile dealerships sometimes will have contamination. So the, the types of materials that were handled in the facility. And what we did is we went in, we identified what was there, identified the pathway towards, or negotiate with the regulators to identify a agreeable pathway to what we call closure of the site. And then once that is intact, with its financial, it is as if that part is done. It may take some time, but it does, you know, a greenfield developer isn't going to go through that process. Yes, and that, by that meaning, a site that has no, you know, current impacts or no current infrastructure. It's that, it's this pre-development time that really costs the developer money. So if we, and it is, as we do work with private sector, it's about seventy-five percent of what we do is in the private sector. But, you know, I do still have this compassion for the public sector from when I was a dumb kid. But the, it's, it is a, a positive, albeit noble, opportunity for a public body to take at a site that will have the kinds of hurdles to get through that, that will. So you can, you can have that ready and, you know, work with, you know, the local economic development organization, the state organizations, or even developers that I know that are not as afraid of sites like this, to be able to bring in, bring in an opportunity or two.
And it is a great piece of property because you've got real service there, as well as I have engineered a major upgrade there with our substation to analyze. And so I, you know, to me, it is a prime piece of, piece of real estate that we do have. And I guess I would ask this question, Mr. Bartley, because I know we took it out of the tax sale and not knowing exactly how all that works at this point, because I've only been there a short time. How does that work? When do we actually acquire the property and things like that?
Well, again, we need to go through our attorney. But the, the idea is, we, we probably, it's still up in the air, need to know what the general problems are before we can take it into our inventory. There's always been the question, if we take it into our inventory, then are we required to clean it up before we would assign it or sell it? And, and so as long as we hold the certificate on it, I think we can do some work and yet not commit ourselves to maybe millions of dollars' worth of renovation or restoration.
Yeah, so you think yourself, as, as long, understanding where you are, it means still need a, a sign off from the, from the owner of record. Because there would probably be, you know, some subsurface investigation. You need to go on the property to do, you know, so I don't, I, we'd have to clear that up if it's not there. But I would, it, it, but that's also a fantastic piece of news. If you don't have it yet, you may realize you don't want it. And there is a level of risk to that. Because what we could do is identify very clearly who is the responsible party. And that's who the regulators are going to come after. And then any previous responsible party that could be attached. Dana's Harry, you know, we've worked with them on, on different, I've worked against them on different facilities, which is, that's, that's just the way these things go. And they have a, they have a bankruptcy in their past. And that, depending on when they transition their title, there may be little to no or significant assets available for a body such as this to go after to help with that cleanup. So.
Well, again, we've opened up the dialogue because when it comes to commissioners and general executive roles, one is developing economic development programs to attract and retain jobs in the county. And with sixty acres out there that, that might become very attractive to some manufacturers or other projects, I think we need to be right at the tip of the spear in helping, helping move Grand County forward.
I agree. I don't under, I don't know what mechanism that you'd like to, like, continue a conversation with? Or if you, yeah, because as with any, any sort of, I know that department heads have the ability to have their own communications and bring them to you. But if this is something you're doing, you know, do we do this all here? Would you, would you do this in a, in a, in a way that?
Well, to meet with all three of us, that's what we do.
Okay, well, is that your, I guess that would be your question. And so would you like to assign this to a department? Would you like to assign this to your body? Is there one of you that wants to have?
We can have a lead.
An ongoing conversation about it?
Continue that dialogue with Darren and, and move forward. So, anybody want to be volunteer on that?
I'd be more than happy to do that. You know, experienced on the county, city council for twelve years and stuff, and knowing about economic development, sitting on the growth council's board. I mean, I'd be more than happy to take that on as a, as a project and work with Mr. Reese. I, you know, I, I am, I, I am wanting to know, and I know it's hard to do, a ballpark cost. Those would be some things. I, I know this body would want to know, you know, what, what all does that involve? And, and again, what funding's out there, what funding mechanism would be out there possibly on environmental type things that would help us out?
Right. Out of the gate, I think that, you know, the, the cost to identify those things, including an initial, you know, some, some initial investigation at the site, would be under ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
That is, that then could set the stage for a identification of just, you know, how robust of a time that, I'm saying this, you will have skin in the game. You know, that's part of, yeah, other than the Department of Homeland Security stuff, they, they're really good about giving free money. I think they took all their matching off. But, you know, if we go to the state, they'll want to see that you're participating. If we go to the feds, they'll want to see that you're participating. And all of this will, will come towards that. But that's, so it's not insignificant, but I think you just save the hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Yep, that's a T.
Just. But, and, and so we wouldn't be coming in here anywhere near that. It'd just be a couple of, few meetings of investigation and a path is basically what, what I would be hoping that we could work out and bring, if not in a couple of weeks, then very soon thereafter.
Well, if you will take the lead and start working with Darren on what this might look like, we'd love to hear your report back.
Okay, good. Do you have any, I would like to also ask, if we bring potentially Crete to bolt into that, do you guys have any relationships with that? There will be some, a attorney aspect of what this will be. Do you have a preferred counsel? I work very closely with Taft on this, with Crete on this. I think what they, with Crete with the redevelopment aspect of it, they might be able to help with, helping set up any, any sort of districts or anything like that that might need to help. But just as far as extra partners, or we can just have the conversation. But just have that thinking about if there's someone you either want to stay away from or don't, I've got relationships with a ton of attorneys and try to make the right fit for the right personality of the project.
When it comes to redevelopment and some of the bigger things that deal with Brownfields, we may have to go to a session with Kyle.
Yeah, and I've worked with Kyle, too. And there's, there's, they're not, by any means, there, there is nothing wrong with our locals. There's just some folks that have spent more time on this space.
Yep.
That, that can also assist.
I would say, I would say what I'd like to do is maybe Darren and I meet with Kyle. Just get his thought pattern of what that would be, his involvement, and then see where we need to take off with that.
Go know Kyle.
That way we're checking our counsel.
Very good.
And he may know of someone as well, and he can mention a, a company to you as well. And certainly, I'd feel comfortable with that if he's telling us that.
Great.
If that makes sense?
Yeah, it does, yeah. I agree.
So we'll set up a meeting with Kyle.
Thank you.
That'll be our first, first stop.
Great. What other questions you guys have for me now, here on the hot spot as a, you know, CSCO CEO?
I'll think of some tough questions later.
Do that, do that, please. Okay, then there it is.
Thank you, Darren.
Thank you very much, thanks. I'll see you some meeting tomorrow.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Stuart.
All right, next up, vacation in the public way.
All right, next up, vacation in the public way, Phil Stevenson representing.
Thank you very much. I don't know if you have, should I have a question in case not? If you have a drawing like this that shows these alleys, if not, I've got three of them, I can give to you real quick.
It's a good idea. Send it back.
Okay, good. I just wanna make sure you do, fill these or see them, see them, both of you just tell you what they are. Jalapa Chapel, which is located on, on part of the lots that join these alleys, are sort of in a situation where they're gonna have to do something about size. I think right now they're looking at whether or not they're going to enlarge at the site or whether they're gonna do something somewhere else. But they can't do any enlarging at the site unless these alleys can be closed off. All the alleys are non-functional, they're not being used for anything. And we've also attached the consents from every landowner who is adjacent to any portion of it. Jalapa's going to most of it, I mean, they touch more than anybody else, but everybody around them has done so. We're also publishing a paper, and I have a proof of publication, which I happen to give to Justin, if I will give it, so we got that to find about this meeting today. So essentially the request is that we close these alleys, which actually, if you look at the ordinance, some of the half of the alley is gonna go to the joint property owners, not just Jalapa. But essentially the rest of them, so theoretically, we've got a little bit of property, we'll be on the tax rules, it's not now, pretty insignificant. Of course Jalapa's won't, but they literally, it's critical to them that they have a couple of these alleys that have any chance at all to enlarge the present facility. And that's what's really sort of driven this. But again, they're not used, they haven't been used. Do you get any notices back from any utilities we sent out to all of them?
I haven't seen any.
I have, I have, so.
Oh, do you have some? Well, then I'll let Justin speak to that.
There are no objections. There's no utilities through there that we need to be concerned about. There's no, is there any utilities in that area now or not? Not to my knowledge, no.
But I left, I think, I left in the ordinance, simply because I think there are none. So we left in the ordinance that if there is a line currently through there, they could, they would retain and easily adjust for the existing line, not for, well, replacing it, but not putting in new ones. But that's there just in case. So I don't know, if you have any other questions about it, Mr. Finney's here too, from the church, who can answer any questions that you might have about their plans or what they're hoping to do.
Would you like to speak to the issue at all?
Well, just that, you know, this gives us an option. We've, we've had a planning session. We're growing fairly rapidly and filling in really strongly with young families and kids. Our church only seats a hundred and twenty people. And we're, have a potential right now of a hundred and forty-five, you know how that goes, some Sundays, we're max clear out. But we just want to, this is our primary option that we're looking at. So these alleys have never been used. I'm seventy-five years old and, and lived there in the community. They've never been used by any of the utilities that I'm aware of in that seventy-five years. But if we decide to build, and that's our primary site, then the one alley in particular would have to be vacated for us to be able to use that site. We have potential of the New House Investment LLC there. That whole family goes to Jalapa has for several years. And they would donate whatever land we need right behind us there, and what is sectionary hooks onto them. So we would have enough parking and accommodation for future growth and stuff. So they have about two hundred acres there in that particular section, runs all the way down a mile to the north. But we would only need maybe a couple acres. You know, we could actually make, work with what we have, but it'd be really tight. So if we go forward with this, they're wanting to donate whatever ground we need, which a couple acres would, would make it a very feasible sign. So, any questions? Or no, we've, all, all three of the current landowners that we attach to go to church there, are very agreeable with doing this, you know, so. And Nancy's an old Jalapa person, so.
I would say well done and more power to you, yes.
Keep them, we're going.
Okay.
Gentlemen, would you like to see the, what I've received as far as the notices?
And you said no, no objections.
No objections in there. But we, I looked through there, we did not receive anything back from PDP.
Are there lines down that way now? I meant for overhead lines for American, I N M?
No, not in, not in the, they've got it at the right of way out by the road that goes down through there. That's the right of way off the road, which is off Francis Slope and Trails where that passes through. That right of way is sixty-six foot through there, thirty-three foot, assigned to our side. But there's no, in the alleys that were vacated that he has described, there's no, not like they've ever been there.
Okay, and then does this also have to go through the EPC or not?
It does not.
Don't think so?
You have, you have total control.
Okay, okay. What general ordinance number we look at?
Eight.
So this would be general ordinance number eight twenty-two-three, or gentlemen are interested in entertaining?
I'll make a motion that we approve general ordinance number eight twenty-two-three to vacate, of course, in the public way.
Second, there is motion with support. Any other discussion, questions?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's Gary.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, and congratulations. Keep up the good work.
I'll get that over to you.
Yeah, good problem I have.
Amen.
Got a lot of little kids right now running around there.
Awesome. Right, that covers, I lost money. Agenda with all this paperwork.
Yeah, item, item three will be tabled.
Okay, DOT procurement resolution is going to be tabled. Hopefully we'll be able to talk about that next time around. Are you aware of other new business, gentlemen?
Yeah.
No, all right. Would note that immediately following this meeting, we will be having a board of finance. Mr. Stewart will call that into session about five or minutes or so after we conclude. But it is time for our public portion, and at this time, a public is invited to speak before the board. Please approach the podium when recognized by the president, state your name and address for the record. Comments should be addressed to the board and limited to items on the agenda. No complaints, accusations, name calling regarding personnel can be allowed during this public discussion time. Limit of three minutes will be given. If more than one person is represented for a group, more than one spokesperson will be heard. It is expected that professionalism and courtesy is displayed at all times during the public comments portion of the meeting. Would anyone like to address the board of commissioners today, concerns or comments? Hearing none, our next scheduled meeting is, is it the fifteenth?
Yes.
Will be the fifteenth, and until then, we will be in recess. Thank you.